It's seven o'clock, it's called order. It's the Town in Brookfield Planning Board Meeting Work Session, Monday, November 2nd, 2020. I'm Tim Straz, Terry Ward.
President.
Hey, Camo.
Here.
John Mayer is excused. Mr. Sherlock.
President.
So we're here to discuss proposal warrant articles. So let's start with the first one, which is our revision of RA1, Section 3G, building lot requirements, building on Class 6 roads. Uh, where we left off last week is we made a couple revisions to our amendment number two, which I put together here for everybody to look at. Uh, I'll give folks a minute to read it and then we can move on from there.
See, now that you're not gonna read it, I'm gonna have to type all that.
I'm so sorry. It's a lot to read. Yeah, nice joke you did on that. So the only changes were at the amendment above, it start at the end of it, rather, Class 5 roads. Uh, 500 feet of the intersection with Class 5 road excluding Class 5 to summer camps. And then that was added to number one. Number two, we add, we combined subdivisions and creation of lots. Number three is kind of our way to absolve liability for services. Number four, states to Hames, five to six. And number eight was the addition, one or two, provide area at end of Class 5 road for storm. Yes, Ed, go for it.
Thank you. So number three, so during the public hearing, we'll be able to offer the public a more detailed explanation of how that process works, which I think will work. The process of inspection by the fire department. We could offer that as part of the public hearing.
That, that has to be tuned up. We, uh, I think we need input from, uh, public safety and the lawyer on the wording of that.
So this didn't go to the lawyer for review yet?
Okay, so I thought it had.
It had, I'm sorry, I forgot to say that.
I was gonna do my second question. So I would, I would agree with, uh, the selectmen rep.
Yeah, so, so, yes. So discussion about that.
Do we actually have to have the waiver mentioned in there?
I, I would, I would say yes. So that would, that would be wording from the, uh, from the lawyer, I think.
Yeah. Yes, Ed.
And then when the warrant language, I'm sorry, when the waiver language is added to number three, and we could have all that information during the public hearing.
Yes.
Do you have driveways less than 500 feet?
Yes, that was a, a change we made to this version.
I wanna see, uh, input from safety officials on that lip of the Class 6 road. See if they agree with that. Also, like, like we said, uh, at one of the other meetings, if, if this goes through, we allow it, uh, before a building permit is issued, it still has to come through the planning board for review.
You want that addition?
Oh, no, no, that's just, uh, that's just a process, right?
Well, I don't see it in this process, right? Cause we're not, if you were to build normally, a town, you'd come to the planning board for review, so.
For a building permit, right?
Well, you would go to the, yes, the building inspector for a permit.
Okay.
So we would have to, uh, add that to this if that's what the group wants to do. Go for it.
If that's not done normally, why would we need it for this one? This circumstance?
That's up for discussion.
I guess that's what I'm trying to start the discussion about. Why wouldn't you treat it differently? That whoever, Rick, was that you that mentioned that?
Yeah.
Why would you feel that it would have to be different, if I may make that point?
Is it a standard building permit application, you mean?
Yeah.
Well, because it's on a Class 6 road. So that opens up another can of worms to have to be satisfied. I think before the permit can be issued.
To have it go through the planning board?
Well, to get the police and safety to sign off on it. And this, there's gotta be some kind of a form developed, I would think, if there isn't already one. That would also be stapled right to the building permit and go to the planning board for approval. I would think.
So we're hearing, we wanna have planning board involvement in the process of proof of construction?
Well, when it involves, uh, something unusual like this, I would think.
So you would leave it up to the building inspector, code enforcement officer, to make sure that everything on the list was satisfied before you issue the permit?
Well, that, that would work too. I mean, so, some official has to make sure everything's there, I mean.
Some, some sections of Class 6 roads, slam dunk.
Yeah.
Others are not.
Yeah.
So, after input from the, uh, so I, I think it should be a special review for Class 6 road. So, limited in that sense that it'll come before the planning board as opposed to just walking in and getting a building permit. Just for, uh, for the sake of making sure we don't get into anything stupid.
Well, let me ask you a different, another question on that. Would, uh, would, would, since the selectmen are the, are the group that enforces the rules in, of the town, when, uh, somebody wanted, they'll go to the selectmen to make sure that they were within their right.
They wouldn't get involved in this. Someone applied for building permit for a Class 6 road. It will be subject to something similar to a site plan review. Just want to make sure everything is, uh, make sure that it's a safe and doable application.
So why?
Like I said, some, some, some Class 6 rules are easy. 500 feet in or whatever the determinant, some of them are. Some access from other towns, that, that was another thing that, that I think we mentioned. Do we, do we want to allow access to Class 6 roads from other towns? Or we just wanna kick this wide open and just, um?
So if we say that, so that would take Janus Road off the table.
I don't know.
It would, cause those are access from Wolfborough and Wakefield. It would take the, uh, northwest end of Tumbledown Dick Road off the list, because that's access from Pleasant Valley Road from Wolfborough. Although, although it's in Brookfield at that point.
Well, this Janus, isn't that the one from Wakefield up on the point?
Yeah, it, it goes from Wakefield to Wolfborough. To Wolfborough.
Okay.
North, north Wolfborough.
So both, then both ends?
That's North Wakefield Road. On either other side of that, it's, it's the property.
North Wakefield turns into Janus?
And then it turns into North Wakefield again.
Oh.
And then, so that would take Cottle Hill Road off.
From the Wolfborough.
From the Wolfborough end. I think that's it.
Woodman Hill from the New Durham end.
Well, it's on a Class 5 road. So, in the end of the Class 5 road, you're talking about Pleasant Valley Road. We're talking about North Wakefield Road is considered a Class 5 road in Wolfborough and in Wakefield, which is the section that's in Brookfield, is considered Class 6.
I think we have Hanson Road coming in from New Durham.
But that's Class, it's not a Class 5 road. So, so of our list of items, of roads, that would take, I think there's four lots on Janus Road. There would be one on Cottle Hill and one on Pleasant Valley. So that's take six out of the eight that we said were billable. So that only leaves you with, well, no. It leaves you with one lot on Cottle Hill and then the Hanson situation at the end of that.
Hanson, yeah. So there'd be a total of what up there? Like two on the left side of the road and then one on the right? So it'd be like three on the Hanson Road?
No, I think there'd just be two.
Just the two?
Yep. And that'd be one on Cottle Hill, and that would be there. And then Tibbetts Hill. I think there's one up there, I think there's just a large lot up there now.
It wouldn't be one on Tibbetts Hill because of the, uh, non-sub divisible, cause there's a house on that.
Right.
So.
What's the rule that comes off of Tibbetts Hill to the?
Tibbetts Hill extension.
And that goes to houses in Wolfborough, right?
Right, yeah.
There's, there's no, uh, Class 6 road there.
Yeah. So, that shrinks it down to just three or four properties from eight. So, I think, I think it's.
Yeah, changes things a little bit.
Right. So. Go for it, Chris.
I, I actually don't really have any issue with this, but one thing I would like to point out is in the case of Janus Road and the Wolfborough end of Tumbledown Dick Road, you'd be excluding someone from building a taxable structure on a piece of road that you currently maintain, have not maintained, and is maintained by another town. So it was essentially free money. Like Janus Road, that road would be maintained, cause there's Class 5 on both sides of it. There's houses on both sides of it. If someone were to build on that portion of Class 6 road, instead of getting the $70 for current use, you'd be passing up on whatever was built, infrastructure and the change of use coming out of current use. I mean, if, if you wanna look at just from a purely revenue standpoint, you're, you're putting out absolutely nothing and getting back whatever would come from, um, property taxes.
I don't, I don't think, um, the revenue standpoint is a difference, because from the other side, every structure that goes up could, possibly would be a loser for the town with, with the amount of money that we pay for, um, other services.
Well, what's the school system charge per student?
Right now?
Yeah, 12 grand or something?
Eighteen thousand a kid.
Eighteen thousand dollars? Holy mackerel.
That's the friends and family bargain rate.
Wow.
Yes, Ed.
Going back to the, uh, the planning board involvement, it's my understanding that the selectmen enforce the ordinances.
Right.
And this process, this ordinance should be clear enough, which, as I'm reading it, and once we get the corrections from the attorney, this covers everything. And if they don't meet these specific requirements, they're not gonna be able to do it. I, I have no idea why you would use the planning board to be an added, it's not gonna be an added benefit. That's what the ordinance is for.
Okay.
I mean, if you wanted to have a, a ZBA requirement where, where when people wanted to do this, they had to go to a ZBA and had a separate body okay their, 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 uh, use of their property, I just, I don't think it's necessary.
ZBA is an appeal.
I'm just using, Joe, I'm just saying as an example, I'm using, I don't think the planning board would do that. Not if this is an ordinance.
Just if this passes, just treat it like any other billable lot, as long as it meets this criteria. That's what you're saying?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And I, I don't see, I don't see the downside to it. It's that, but that's why my focus is on the waiver and the process of the inspection, to make sure the town is covered. Has already been proven by some research that you did about, uh, Supreme Court and saying that it always holds up. You just have to make sure that it, that it does.
I mean, that, you know, ob- obviously you wanna have, uh, somebody, you know, a lawyer that has better access than Google to, uh, to prove that out, but I, I wasn't able to find any place where the state didn't uphold the rights of the town above the landlord.
And I would, I would continue to say that that would be some of the concerns. Even what you're bringing up, people in the public hearing may actually have those same concerns. And I think that's what has to be answered, the waiver, the liability to the town. I don't know what else, what else the downfall of it is. I just don't know, I don't see it.
Okay.
Different questions. So if we were going to require that this, uh, access only coming from a Brookfield side of the road, or whatever, that could just be added to the, the end of number three, can't it? Where it says, "The road has a Class 6 highway and must originate from Brookfield," or something, right? Does that meet the, what we're discussing?
Yeah, I just, just, if I can add to what you're saying is, do, Wakefield obviously has this, correct? Does Wolfborough have it?
Yep.
They also.
They, they have, uh, all, all the surrounding towns have some process for building on a Class 6 road.
So we're the only ones that didn't have it?
Yeah. Other, I found, uh, Hill, over Hill, New Hampshire, they don't allow it either, but.
I was adding on to what you said, because if, if the other towns already have that, uh, do we have to add that? Would we still have to add something like that in ours?
Do whatever we want with ours.
Well, because of the property in question, we'd be in Brookfield anyway, you'd see access that we're talking about. So whether they came in from Wolfborough on Pleasant Valley Road and decided to build at the end of, uh, Scoop Pond Road, 500 feet from where the end of Class 5, then if we don't make a stipulation, they can access it from that side. I guess it'd be, it's a way to limit the available lots. I mean, isn't it? You just said it knocks it down from.
Yes.
12 to, or from eight to four?
Yeah, four.
Figure four.
Yeah.
I mean, that itself is a good thing, I would think.
I mean, there's two ways to look at this discussion right at this point, right? We're putting more limitations on it, and the pool is getting smaller. So we're allowing it in very select locations, which I think we're coming to a conclusion that are agreeable. The other side of it is that by putting these limitations in it, if somebody wants to build in another location where one of these, you know, one of these items are preventing them from doing that, then they have to go through this process to make change.
True.
So, I'm not opposed to being stringent and trying to narrow this focus, cause it buys the town time until somebody, a young man from Massachusetts shows up and wants to build a, take it in care lot, that's a mile down Cottle Hill Road, right? Then, so it protects us from that.
Well, it can't be a mile down. Okay.
But he could buy the property, come into meeting, petition that he wants to be able to build on a road. What has to happen? We have to review our zoning. We have to determine whether or not that makes sense for the town at that time, whether to go from 500 feet to 500, 5,000, you know, 208 feet or whatever, you know?
People come and say 499 feet, what's wrong with 499 more?
Right. And that's the process.
Well, it's more likely to pass with the town if it limits it from 12 potential sites to four.
But then the other argument.
Helps its eyes, if it passed.
The other argument would be, you could have the town meeting, or the public comment, and be like, "Well, why are you limiting it to four? Why is it in eight? Why are you creating such restriction?" And, and so that, the other way, why are you bringing so much effort into something that is only confined to one little area and not being able to be applied throughout the whole town? So I mean, there's, I guess there's two sides of this, and I, I guess my feeling is I, I'm fine with some of these confinements, uh, as we build this, this zoning ordinance, but we're really not gonna know until we move forward or pass this discussion phase and get it in front of the public and see what they.
I'm still thinking, oh, it's gonna get passed by the public, is it? There are limitations.
Well. So I, I guess I'm starting to bait on, on, do we wanna put in these items that we discussed tonight? And then.
Have the lawyer look at it?
Or have a discussion with, you wanna happen?
Yes.
Okay. So.
I already, I already sent, um, a request to the lawyer for, um, addressing number three.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I, I think it's, uh, wise to have, um, input from safety officials that are gonna answer the bell on any of these things.
Yeah, I agree with that.
So, uh, item number three, we're gonna have a discussion with the, uh, municipal services.
And the attorney.
Well, the attorney is gonna review this whole thing. I mean, cause part of having the waiver, to your point, Ed, is we need to be able to go to the fire chief, police chief, and say, "We're gonna do this. We're gonna have him sign this waiver." Are you okay with this, right?
Yeah, I wanna know what, what documentation he's using.
Right.
Make sure it's working. Cause they're already doing it.
Right. And then the, the other, uh, item that we were talking, discussing was the ad must originate from Brookfield to a Class 5. And I'm wondering if that should go in the, in the first paragraph at the end. Which makes a bit of a run-on sentence, but let me give it a whirl. Amendment, Article 2, A3G, to allow lots at least 250 feet, 250 feet of frontage on a Class 6 road to be developed under certain conditions, including that the driveway to the property must be less than 500 feet of the nearest intersection of the Class 5 road, excluding Class 5 to summer camps, and must originate from Brookfield.
Right.
Okay. All right, so I'll retype this and we'll get it to the lawyer and we'll have a discussion with services.
Yeah, chief and chief.
And.
The police chief too, as well, right?
Chief and chief.
Yep, and we'll, seven days from now, we'll be again, right?
Now, should, now, should we?
We're close.
Should we invite them to the meeting? How are we gonna, how are we gonna gather the information? Cause I would love to hear, you know, any concerns they have in person. I don't know if they would do that, but I would like to hear, you know, if, uh, if fire chief could give us some stories of, you know, what things he failed or what things he feels were past. I think that would be.
Maybe they, maybe they come on a public hearing.
I would want it before the public hearing to hear it, so we may wanna adjust it, but.
I'll probably just send them out a quick email to both of them, invite them to next week's meeting here, and give them a heads up on what it is we're, we want them here for. And that way it'd give you plenty of time, just in case they say, "No, I can't make it." And we can take us something else. But that's.
Well, we could, we could do both. We set up a meeting during the week to go down there and just approach the subject with them and tell, tell them what we're going with this, and then invite them to the meeting to come in and give their reasons for, yeah, and then. That, that would, that would make, that would make me comfortable.
Okay.
And maybe an option for a, a written response to? Cause it may really may not be something that they have to come and do.
Right, right.
They might say that we've had no problems with this, it's worked for years, this is what we do. Here's the process we use. That way they don't have to, just give them an option.
They may even have a waiver already that's, peel it off a book for them, you know? That would be handy. Rick, you wanna help me coordinate?
Yeah.
Since you know people over there, I don't have anybody over there.
I've never, uh, met with the fire chief, I've met with the police chief before.
Okay.
Has, what, what are your wild parties?
No.
All right, we'll move on. That was a good discussion there. We're, it sounds like we're right on the edge there of finding this in that. Building code updates.
Spoke with the, uh, building inspector. And he's, he said, "Never mind about the roof pitches."
Never mind about the what?
Roof pitch, but definitely four-foot frostbowl on main buildings. And he mentioned monolithic slabs for additions, outbuildings over a certain size. And he didn't have the dimension of the, uh, size available. So he's got, he's, I'm waiting for that. That sounds, that sounds reasonable to me. With the, uh, four-foot frostbowl under the main building.
But a monolithic pour on a size.
Carriages.
Yeah, they, they just, there's a minimum size there has to be?
Yes, he said that the monolithic pour would be on a structure or addition that was above a certain size. And he didn't, uh, he didn't have the information of that cutoff size. Because some, you know, you can't stop someone from building a shed or something that would be perfectly fine on raft. So the, he says there is a certain size, and, uh, he was gonna give me that information.
Cause I mean, monolith.
He wants to see it going like that.
I mean, a garage is a small footprint, so it was just fine, I don't wanna get insane.
Yeah, 24, 25, I, I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, okay.
But he, he just, uh, said to me, "There's a, there's a cutoff on sides of that." At the main thing, there's the four-foot frostbowl under the main structure. And he said, "Never mind about the roof pitches." That would be a nightmare.
So that's what we're gonna go with for a building code update?
Yes.
So I'll write that up and put it in this document of our amendments here.
Yeah.
And.
And just leave the, uh.
Dimensions for the monolithic.
Monolithic slab for additions, garages, buildings, et cetera, over a certain size. Just leave that blank.
Yeah.
And when he gives us the number, we can plug it in.
Okay.
That's it.
That's it?
Easy.
Good. Personal wireless service facilities.
Okay, I don't know, I didn't give you a copy, but this is the brand-new Tanworth's copy of their, they spent, they did a lot, they spent at least a year on this.
Yeah.
And it's been through their attorneys, there's two attorneys on their planning board. It's been through them and it's been through another attorney. But they don't have any zoning in their town. So that really needs to be reviewed, because I don't know if it's gonna be kinda for us. Did anybody look at the Wakefields?
Yes. I looked at it on my phone as much as I could, I mean.
And in my opinion, just from my cursory view of it and my experience, it's the closest thing.
It looks like they copied each other from Brookfield and Wakefield.
Yes.
Wakefield's a little more abbreviated.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. And, and what's good is that they, I believe they recently used this, but don't quote me on it, that they used this for the wireless tower that was put up. Okay, so it's already in play.
So it's 2017, 2017, right?
2018.
So ours was 2017, Brookfield's. So I read Brookfield, Wakefield, I read the Wolfborough one. Brookfield, Wakefield, I read the whole for the one. There's two items, I think the issue that the public brought forth is saying that it's too restrictive in town due to one line item in the Brookfield zoning, which pertains to ridgeline. Which dictates an elevation that you can, you can, you can install one to. If you look at the Wakefield one, it's a thousand feet in elevation. Brookfield is seven hundred feet and Wolfboro does not have one. So you could put a cell tower top of Crown in Wolfboro if you wanted. But in Brookfield, most of the town is between six hundred and eight hundred feet in elevation. So mostly at the six hundred level, so really the ridgeline is limiting construction over seven hundred feet in elevation, which pretty much takes care of ninety percent of the town, there's only two areas of town that would be conducive to installing a device which would be tumble down deck, cause it's at a thousand feet on the top of Moose Mountain. But you can't put one within three hundred feet of a ridgeline as to a certain elevation. So I think that's why there's no cell towers in town, it's cause seven hundred feet is kind of median elevation in town.
Your tower will be low, they restrict the heights too, so your tower will be lower than the surrounding ones.
Right.
I don't know how that works, but.
So we had the fellow who did the roof on our house, it was on that juniper lane, which is off of, up by one tons there in Wakefield.
Yep.
Which goes out up to Long Mountain, and there's a cell tower at the end of this road. So that is at the thousand foot elevation level, and that's why it's there, I mean, we can, from my house, I can see it, I don't know if you can see it.
Is that the one behind you and Rob?
That's, that's the one I shoot towards, so I don't hit any of the houses.
Yeah, so that's, that is at the thousand foot level, that's at the maximum. So that's why it's there, but that ridgeline, that Long Mountain going to the west, they would never put a tower up to this hill or anything there, cause it's too close to that other tower. And so there's only two areas in town where it can be done, which would be tumble down deck and Moose Mountain, so. And the zoning does not allow any of that anywhere in town, based on elevation.
So we could stick with our own if we were to considering the times today and when this thing was written and people were afraid of towers and, it's a lot of talk about camouflage.
It was three years ago though, that's the part that this isn't twenty years ago, this was twenty seventeen this was adopted.
So are you saying that it should be higher?
Twenty seventeen, what did we do in twenty seventeen, did we just strike out some stuff? Cause that's very.
There is a lesson that we didn't do anything to it.
I didn't think we did either.
We didn't, we kept pushing it down the road because.
This is all old language.
Yeah.
But it's no different than, I mean, it's the same, same language that's in Wolfboro, it's just they add more details to all the, to each section, you know, to require, you know, they're, they're saying they want a, you know, a civil engineer and mechanical engineer, they all have stamps, they have to have their own assurance. You know, this, this and that, the only difference between ours and Wolfboro's is, and probably Tamworth, is that they just put more stipulations into the process.
What about the height?
What about the height?
Well, that seems like that's the, the issue.
Well, the elevation of where the tower can be at, sure.
Correct.
Yes, that is the issue, that's the limiting factor.
So if we struck out ridgelines, height limitations, would be, they would be able to put them up?
Well, I would, I would say if you want to allow a cell tower in town, I think the only sensible, this is just my opinion, your sensible location would be tumble down deck. Because that is accessible to get to, you can't put it on top of Moose Mountain, cause you're not gonna be able to service it and access it.
Why not?
Cause you have to have a road, you have to have power. Now, because prohibitive.
Although there's roads up there. And.
You have power on the deck.
Yes. Do you laugh?
No, no, I, I, I would actually say that Moose Mountain is the most desirable location, because there's not currently any cell coverage to the west of that mountain, and that would.
That would serve us.
Right, but so would tumble down deck would solve that too, cause you could put it there and you could have two hundred and seventy degrees of coverage.
Yeah. Copper Crown though would be right there, I mean, if it's higher than Moose by a long shot.
Right, it's not in town.
There, there was power at the top of the mountain, I don't know if it still works or not.
Right.
And I've driven a pickup up there, so it wouldn't be a stretch to think that
Right.
a road could be rubbed out pretty easily.
And they already, they already got the house up there for the, for all the electronics. Clean up all that.
Yeah.
There's a, there's a company in Tamworth called Grasshopper, and they're, they've been sold and now it's moving into Hub sixty-six. And Tamworth is going to possibly go into an agreement with them to allow them to use their fire tower area to give their town pretty good broadband. And it sounds like this is something the town wants. So it would seem like that it's the elevation and whatever ridgeline limitations. What was the reason why there's a limitation?
They don't wanna see the towers.
Right.
Well, when was that, twenty seventeen? Or twenty fifteen, it was early.
I, I'm thinking it was much earlier.
I think it was too, and.
These, I think these things are twenty years old.
And what was the the strongest survey answer was internet.
Yes.
And what's preventing at least the wireless internet is there's no tower.
It's true. Even, even Verizon that works in most of the town, I've never been failed by it, but the wireless broadband over that thing just sucks. It's enough to talk, but, I don't know, I think, I don't think cell phones are going away. Or internet.
I mean, Hub sixty-six gives the consumer, and I think it costs like four hundred dollars, five hundred dollars, they give the customer a dish, and the dish is pointed to that transmitter and they're, they're providing by fiber optic the internet and then they're just transmitting it out. That's what they do.
So I don't think there's anything wrong with our cellphone, our cell tower regulations, that just can't be, some line strikes went updated and leave all the stuff in there about maintenance, rebuild, no longer in use, et cetera.
Yeah, I think the one difference is that the other difference was that for, in town we require a bond when you're construction for cases of decommission. Wolfboro does a similar thing. Uh, Wakefield does not, they just say in the end that if you abandon it and you, you skip out of town, it's sue you. So.
So what was Wakefield's height, you said nine?
One thousand.
Thousand.
Is it really over one thousand, Wakefield?
I don't think so, I was looking at a topo map today, and I think, I think that it's the highland.
So Moose is sixteen, seventeen?
Right.
Seventeen.
Copper Crown?
It's a little bit two hundred feet taller, roughly.
And Copper Crown is at New Durham, right?
Right. And then tumble down deck is the other one, which is at a thousand feet.
Did we look at New Durham's zone? Maybe their, their policy is blocking Copper Crown. Cause that, that would certainly serve as, will provide them as well.
Is that a, is that state land?
Copper Crown?
Yeah. No?
That's private property.
Right to the summit, pretty much.
That was all the way up that trail.
It's all ski mountain. If I saw something that was a wild, there was a.
Does the town receive any revenue, do towns receive revenue if they, they put up a cell tower? Or if they put a tower up like this?
If it's on town land, they, they would. If it's on private, they, they would receive the revenue.
But do we, but does the town tax that structure and that business?
I don't know.
I'm just curious.
If they put in a nuclear valve, that would tax it, right?
I guess so. So have we proceeded?
Yes, I haven't seen what it says about that. Well, what the town decided, what we're deciding.
Well, so are we to proceed to?
Allow the towers on. I'm just, I'm just saying if we wanna make changes to get coverage in town, we should allow them to put the one of those. And strike the what's the tower, like twenty feet or something?
It's thirty feet above the tree line, which is really typical.
But I, I would wanna change to the height that's gonna work. To, to allow or to give the option for people in town.
They're not gonna pull up a tower just to pick up seven hundred people in Brookfield.
So it's twenty feet above average tree height.
They're gonna get a little ten of New Durham and everything else, maybe.
Tumble down deck might as well one hundred and forty seven feet. So if you said minimum of twelve hundred feet, that would eliminate tumble down deck, but only leave Moose, right?
Well, no, it would allow tumble down deck, allow Copper Crown and allow Moose Mountain, including all those.
Well, you said minimum of twelve hundred feet.
So the top graphic summit's greater than. No personal wireless service facility situated within a horizontal distance of three, three hundred feet of topographic summits greater than seven hundred feet elevation. Or within three hundred feet of a ridgeline leading to such a summit.
I think that Moose Mountain parking lot is seven, well, my driveway's seven hundred.
Yeah, Moose Mountain.
Six ninety-nine.
I think it'll actually be like eight hundred feet.
So that's out. The way it is now.
Yeah.
After, after reading our our restrictions, what I came away with is if we want to allow the cell phones, we have to allow it on the ridges and eliminate that height, and just line them out. Maybe, maybe someone wants to keep them in there. What's the goal, to change this to let them in or keep it the way it is and keep them out?
Well, it's not really the goal of the planning board to do that.
Right.
Our goal to change the ordinance to match what the citizens want and then have them vote on.
Right.
Not to specify, let's try to get it through.
So what the master plan, the input that was given back for that was cellphone coverage in there?
Right. Uh, no, it was internet. So.
These towers supply internet too?
They can, they can.
So, I mean, it also goes against the rural nature of town.
What's that?
To have a cell tower sticking above the town.
Says who? The survey says that we need internet.
Yeah.
Period.
People living in rural and historic towns, I guess they don't get cell phones then, right? Or internet? What do they? How did they come up with that? Rural historic attributes of a town? Nineteen ninety?
I don't know, I, for me personally, this issue, this, this is I don't know, I'm looking at this, this is another avenue towards a similar goal that's being worked towards in town already with authority in forming over broadband, high-speed internet, Carroll County Broadway, and then issue. So.
I'm not a tech guy, but I, I, I don't, I don't see how this would hurt, I mean, there are cell towers all over the place, I mean, they're they're not ruining my view of anything when I see them anymore.
I think it's pretty ugly, having beautiful pieces of fiber optics strung on dead tree limbs all around the town. So it's the same thing, you've technology's technology, have you seen the intersection? It's like, it's a complete mess.
Another thing.
You're worried about, you're worried about a nice shiny stainless steel tower.
With a red label on the.
How many, how many towers do they need, it's not like a wind farm.
No, that's, that's what I mean, it's not. Well, that would be a good question, if, if you change it, if we change it to the higher amount and get rid of the ridge issue, how many, how many actual areas are you talking about? Where a tower would go on, right?
Well, how tall is the tower?
Two tall, two, one?
Six hundred feet or something?
No, none of it, there's no.
I don't know, how close is, are there any airports around there that would, approach lines with, with limit? So we talked a piece.
This isn't, this isn't all with a tower sticking off of Bear Summit there, right, you know what I'm talking about?
Oh, that's awesome. You can, you can see it from, from the bed?
You can see it from everywhere. My guess is you're talking like a hundred, hundred fifty feet, something like that, it's probably what you're looking at for a tower.
Or have we talked about one location?
Nothing's approaching fees over Brookfield, less than two thousand feet.
So the flights that diverted to Laconia, when they need space, they come over Moose Mountain, and they're private jets.
What was presented to the public last time?
I must have lived in there.
No, it's seventeen or wherever it was, you thought it was twenty years ago or something, when did they vote on it, say no?
I don't, I don't think it was presented in two thousand seventeen.
I don't, I think that was.
I don't remember, to be honest with you, I mean.
If you read it, it sounds like it's been around since the least.
So why don't we just present it again then, and for discussions to the town and see what happens?
Well, I think if we do it, we need to change the.
Right, change those.
Change the, the height.
Yeah, strike out the heights and the ridges and see what happens. That would solve people wanting cellphone coverage internet, that would, that would outsolve it.
How do we get a, a consult from somebody that has the technical background to, like if we just change, I don't wanna just make a change and then it's not gonna do, it's not gonna.
Well, that's kind of my opinion is that, I was kind of thinking, I was kind of caught off guard, and this was brought to us so close to the cycle, you know, we've devoted a lot of time to other issues to try to better understand them, and yet we're quick to make changes here and throw it in front of the town, so. I'm with you, I think we would need some expert opinion on this.
Oh, the other thing is if, if you want, you could table it till after the election. If something comes up, if somebody wants self-tower relief, we could have a special topic.
Or would it do harm to make the change? And just present it?
Yes. We've determined that on many other issues that we've discussed here, that's why we're, we've met every week in the past, every week.
Just that this has been tabled, not tabled, it's been put aside so often, I just don't wanna see it. It needs, I think it needs to be more well thought out. But I just don't wanna see it just be forgotten.
We could make it a, a discussion topic for the regular meetings and review and.
What's that, next week?
Yes, but we'll, we won't make any decision on anything next week, but I would we can put it on the agenda and I would say we put it in the research phase. And we bring documentation for the group to review. We could discuss. We could discuss and evolve, you know, give it the time it deserves.
And that's why I said not to, that's why I didn't mean that we should definitely move this to get in the warrant article and getting the, the ordinance done this time around, I just wanted it left on the agenda and not to be talked about. Fifteen minutes each meeting, gather information, get a technical aspect of what changes have to be made to do what we want it to do, and then go from there.
Like we've done with the others.
Yeah, well, I think, yeah, but these were, these were
There's fifteen to two hundred feet cell towers.
Mm-hmm.
So
What are your thoughts, Terry, do you wanna do research this more? This subject going into next year?
Is that what we're doing with the group, you mean?
That's what our discussion is right now.
No, we gotta new research.
Well, I mean, we're gonna point you, so we gotta switch from trying to go for cable
No, but I'm, but I'm switching that.
No, we're just gonna stop going in, in the direction of creating an ordinance for this town meeting. Right?
Yes.
Yes.
But we're gonna keep working on it actively.
Absolutely.
Along with the master plans, it's part of the master plan was is there a, is there a tower communication or uh
Karen, it's not required.
It's not required, what I'm saying is, is something, this is on the survey, it's part of internet, it's part of what the people were, and this was a roadblock to it.
Yes.
So that's why I think they should stay on the agenda.
Okay, so we gotta figure out a way to get some cell provider to approach us and we should put a tower in our town. Essentially, that's what we're looking for, right?
I wonder if you wanna do it with a company, but I
No.
I don't know, how, how would we get a consult?
All the people have to figure that out, it's part of our research.
Okay.
If someone else had put a tower there, they're gonna come in and say, hey, you wanna put a tower there?
Right.
The, the select board already got a, a letter from, wasn't it an emergency, uh, emergency system?
Oh, that was a few years ago, yeah.
Yeah, but that has, it had to do with his ordinance.
I think that was one that was sent to every town in New Hampshire though.
I think that's uh, they're gonna do it if they need it.
For the state police, right, is that what you mean? Those state communication systems?
Yes. That's what it was, police and uh, emergency management.
So, are we gonna make a motion here?
Are we gonna motion to table, motion to keep on the agenda, what's the motion?
That's what I'm asking you, you seem to table it for the time, town, time being and uh take it up for fifteen minute discussions each meeting?
Can I just keep it on the agenda?
We already motioned that we were gonna do it, correct? I can't remember.
No.
No, I wrote it all down. I thought we did. No, we tabled this.
We were gonna, we didn't motion anything, cause we were going to research. We only made one motion, we made motion to discuss, I think, that was it.
I, I really don't think it needs a motion. But we should, should we have taken this off the table and talked about this? This was put on the table, wasn't it? That was tabled to get the attorney, fire, and everybody else in line.
Yes, for next meeting.
Okay. So it's still on the table?
Absolutely.
But we talked about it.
Yes.
It would be nice to have it taken off the table, then talk about it so the meeting minutes would be in order.
I'm sure I'm gonna butcher that.
No.
Non-intentionally.
Okay.
Uh, so personal wireless service facilities will go on the agenda for our regular meetings, of which we will conduct research.
What's the action, clear action item, who does what?
And you're gonna do everything, and I'm just gonna write it down.
I just say just get clear action items, so we'll come back next time, we got something.
So the action item for the next meeting is, well, members will have to do research to figure out um, what we're gonna do as far as elevation, right?
Okay, I'm gonna find out, I'm gonna tell you what my action item is. My action item
Why don't you tell me that?
What I wanna do is I'm gonna find out who they went to
Sure.
To get, obviously they got a consult to do it.
Yes.
But at least I know they did.
Okay.
I can find that easily.
That's the action item for next week.
So whatever we pick though, it's gotta be nine hundred feet probably. I would, to meet the hundred, to meet the thousand foot mark that we're shooting for, and a hundred foot tower. It's gonna be nine hundred foot elevation.
That's part of the discussion, right?
Yeah. I mean, we can find like that at least tonight, right?
I don't think we can find that.
No?
I mean, the consult will, will tell us, they might say, well, five feet is not enough. No, no, they might say it is, I don't know. I don't hear somebody say that it is. So we're not just haphazardly changing the, the height and it's not gonna do anything.
Well, we trying to steer the poss, the potential of this tower into a certain place in town? If that's the case, then we need to stipulate.
Yes, there's only a couple places.
Right.
So
And that'd be a good consult question.
Yes, it would.
Cause we also wanna know where we're gonna put it and who's gonna get covered. Okay.
That's it.
That's it? Anything else?
That's all folks.
Return line seven fifty-five.